And today is Wednesday, June eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Time is two oh three P M. This is a continuation of our fiscal year twenty-three budget meetings. Today we have the auditor in our clerks division led by our director, Jim Brannon officially calling the meeting to order. Attending commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios. Any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. One and only business fiscal year twenty-three budget review with clerk Jim Brannon, chief deputy clerk Jennifer Locke, and of course her or their department heads. Clerk Brannon, take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Filios and commissioners. When we put our budget together, we were listening very hard to what guidance you gave. And it's been reiterated in the budget meetings I've been to. So we came in as lean as we could. And we are hoping that what we present today makes sense for you. If not, please let us know and we will discuss. And if necessary, add to our budget. But with that.
All right. Well, we're going to start with county assistance. We gave you some handouts. We're going to kind of walk through each department. And Shelley's going to come up, too. We'll have a come up. So the first sheet you'll see is the county assistance. And we're going to take a first look at the Fund Ten that had the police holds in there. The actually it's called involuntary mental health holds. That program ended this year because of Senate Bill twelve thirty-seven. And so with that, by that ending, we had allocated for the budget in two thousand and twenty-two, two hundred and seventy-five thousand that was being levied out of Fund Ten. That will not be levied this year because that program has ended. And then we have adjusted our revenue based on what we've been seeing throughout the year. Last year, we had budgeted fifteen thousand. We still collect on involuntary mental health holds. And this year we're budgeting fifty thousand for collection. So we upped our revenue projections for fiscal year twenty-three for this fund by thirty-five thousand. And then I kind of give you a summary below just showing what's changing, too. Because House Bill three sixteen also changed the county assistant program, which we levy or haven't levied for a while, but we fund out of the Inogen Fund forty. And with that, we broke down where the program's going. So right now, we currently have for fiscal year twenty-two, we had budgeted four full-time employees. We're now going down to two. We've been very fortunate to be able to start relocating people within our clerks division so they can stay with us because they've done an excellent job over there and they're dedicated. So we're cutting the personnel budget out of Fund forty. We're bringing it, we're cutting one hundred and six thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars from that. And that currently is being funded out of the Inogen Fund forty restricted funds, fund balance. And then we have also reduced just the admin, the second page we're on, the admin budget for operation by eight thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Okay, this is where it gets interesting. Randy and I were covering the numbers. So as you know, right now, we have to now pay for the state portion for Panhandle Health, the health district. So we already contributed about eight hundred thousand previous years from the county. So now we get to pick up another eight hundred and twenty-four thousand that the state no longer is paying, the counties are responsible for. So we have allocated that again through fund balance. We're not currently levying it. And then we also have the salaries and any remaining as we close down the program for county assistance coming out of fund balance. And from there, Randy and I were looking at the numbers. We should have after we allocate the money that we need for fiscal year twenty-three out of fund balance, two million five hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and six dollars left. So with that, you can maybe do another three years with paying that portion to the state or the state portion of the health district. Now, when that law changed, we had to start now collecting reimbursement. It can no longer be in Fund forty. We've created an account in Fund Ten. And so that reimbursement now will be sitting there, any money we get through the out the year. We have allocated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we plan on collecting next year. So county assistance right now, they have all these liens out on properties. And then I think about fifty-three million dollars with the collections they're collecting. So they do a really good job. We have one of the most successful programs in the state. So they will continue collecting money. So they will continue bringing money to try to offset what we have to pay to Panhandle. So we.
Oh, you know, that's the amount we collect in our in tax revenue.
What did we say?
Fifty-three mil. You just said fifty-three million? That's what we collected this year in tax revenue. Isn't that odd?
That's what's outstanding.
So collect all that and we'll give people a holiday.
There we go. I would, I would like to weigh in, too. If, if our, if the other counties in the state of Idaho had operated county assistance the way Kootenay County had, perhaps we wouldn't have had these wholesale changes. The fact that we haven't been levying, the fact that we have a fund balance, I attribute that to the lady who is going to be speaking right now, Shelley. So Shelley, would you please go into some detail about your program and how it's going to be for twenty-three?
So as mentioned before, the program has drastically changed, but yet it is still law to collect the money. And also cremation burial is a major component. Non-medical is something that the board would have to look at to see if you would like us to continue in that realm. That is not anything that's mandated. We use it very seldom. We have not used a lot of the funds for non-medical, which is things such as rent, housing, utilities, and such for years. Once in a long while, we use those. Before I came here, it was used quite readily and thousands of dollars went out for that. And that is not a reimbursable amount that we do when we do non-medical. That is just money that we're helping somebody and there is no reimbursements on that money. As Jennifer had mentioned, we do have, the numbers are over fifty-five million in outstanding debt. Now, that's only the debt that we can attribute to our new computer system. There was an old computer system. I have a way of going in the old computer system. There's not a way to just convert it over. So those monies and running reports on the old system that was before two thousand and five are nonexistent. But I can still go in, which I do, in a weekly basis and look at people. We do get calls continually from the title companies in order to establish, is this the same person? Because they're now purchasing or selling homes. And they're out of respect wanting to make sure that these liens are not the same person. That happens on a daily basis. So that's a very critical part of county assistance that we don't have a hit every time, but we do have enough. We had three hits this week already of monies that will come back to the county. Last week, we had one hit out of the old system and we were able to get a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and some odd cents out of somebody who had passed from two thousand and fourteen. And working that file, we finally were able to get that money. Those are the type of things we're doing. We still have collections that come in. Individuals like to pay cash. They don't always like to pay via any other revenue. They maybe not even have a checkbook. We do have people that still pay checks. So just to give you an idea of still having that front desk available for people would be that in just four months, we brought in sixteen thousand dollars in just the cash and the people that want the receipts for their items. So there is numerous things that even past still working the accounts. We still had sixteen accounts that recently, applications that have gone through that we have to process. We still have ones and appeals, as you know, that go out seventy-five days from when the appeal. We're still working cases. So we're probably looking at another six months minimum with appeals that could possibly be done. Your modification packets are still something you have to leave as an option for all people because they're still making payments to the county. As you see, that's really the only ones typically you'll see now is if they want debt forgiveness, deferment, or decrease. So those are the type of items that we will be working with besides lien releases and things like that. We do have suspended files also in which people were supposed to obtain possibly social security or get Medicaid reimbursement back. We have not closed those files in the realm that it's very difficult once we approve a case to get money back from the state once we've paid. And so we have about twelve of those cases that we are also working. So that's the money that's left. If you see any money left in the medical and Inogen section, those are what that is for.
Out of the fifty-five million, what is ours and what is CAT's?
You can, it's very hard to say CAT years are done. It's, I mean, we usually, before the two thousand and ten, it was ten thousand dollars that we paid before CAT stepped in. But that's only a year at a time. So if somebody had helped for over four or five years, we might be out forty or fifty thousand. CAT would be out the rest. And that's the money that they're going to be still collecting. CAT will no longer have a group as of July fiscal year July two thousand and twenty-three. But we are still supposed to give them money. It sounds like health and welfare will take that money that we give to them is the idea. But they have not had that as a solid answer where that money will go at that point in time.
Thank you.
Any questions for Shelley?
Nope.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, guys.
Move on to elections. Asa, will you join us? So I'm going to let Asa do most of the talking, but I just wanted to take a snapshot, one of our trainings at IAC, just to show you the revenue that we get from the state for election consolidation fund. And Asa, we talked earlier, thinks we can even project it up a little bit more. So we'll discuss that. And then we're also looking to do basically reorganization. We want to bring back the election supervisor we had, I think about three years ago in that position with the demand of how many registered voters, technical skills and workload, and the law changes. I think we need it at this point. And then we're looking at some conversions. We have clerks twos that are grades three. And this position technically wise is becoming more difficult every day. And we reached out to Ada to get their job descriptions. They have thirteen full-time employees. We have five. And we were looking at particularly the election training specialist that deals with the poll workers. That's a very dedicated job. They could be training between three hundred and fifty to five hundred poll workers. And so we're recruiting throughout the whole year, too. So that position, we went to go visit down in Ada County. This person actually had another person dedicated just to that. And we're going to continue with that. That position's currently vacant. So we're looking to get that from a step, excuse me, a grade three to a grade five. And we looked at the positions that we want to change in Ada. The election training specialist right now is the range is seventeen dollars and seventy-four cents to twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents. And then just the, what we want to say clerk two, we want to move to elections clerk three. We want to call those election specialists. And that range is sixteen dollars forty-two cents to twenty-two dollars and sixty-one cents in Ada County. And then I'm going to let Asa speak to his B budget and any other things he would like to add.
Yes. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Jennifer. The other two line items on the A budget I just wanted to briefly touch on are overtime pool. We're looking to increase that just a little bit from eleven thousand to twelve thousand. That's the unloaded amount. Obviously, loading goes on top of that. That is mainly due to our November election coming up. We normally have more temporary workers and more staff overtime in our even year November elections because of the size and scope of the elections. So that is what both the overtime pool increase and part of the elections temp pool increase are attributable to. The other portion of the temp pool increase, which we're asking to go from thirty-nine thousand to forty-three thousand is due to the mid-year wage increase that you all approved for our elections temps, bringing them from the ten dollars and ten fifty an hour to twelve and twelve fifty an hour. And this amount is still below what we requested in both fiscal years twenty and twenty-one because of our technological advances with the e-poll books. So those are the other A budget items there. And then in regards to B budget, there's two major line items that are driving our increase this year from last year, year over year. One is our election supplies, which is kind of our, it's kind of our catch-all account. It's where everything from our ballots to our envelopes to multiple other portions of election funding and costs come out of supplies for polling places. All of those type of things come out of election supplies. The main driver in that this year, which is about a fifteen thousand dollar increase is what we're asking for is, of course, inflation. We have just our general supplies like paper and pens and those type of things are going up dramatically. And then also our costs with our vendors that we use for printing and mailing ballots and for our coding of our tabulators, those are going up slightly as well. So we have to account for those in our, in our budget for, of course, we still budget for four elections per year. We don't always have an August one, but we may actually have one this year. And so we always have to budget for it just in case. The other major line item driver is our temporary personnel services, which is where our poll workers and poll judges are paid out of. We did, due to, again, inflation and the rising cost of gas and the amount of work that our judges put in, we did increase our judges' pay this year because, again, of the amount of work they do. And then they're picking up their supplies from our office, driving them to the polling place. In many cases, unless they're search and rescue for an outer line location, they're driving them back. So all of those are costs they're incurring because we don't reimburse them for their gas. So we're asking, or we're anticipating our items to, or our cost, excuse me, for that to be a little bit higher this year due to that increase for the judges. We didn't increase the general poll workers' pay at all, just the poll judges that we have running the locations. And if there are any questions on any.
So just briefly, how did you arrive at the thirty-two thousand?
At the thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, the temporary personnel services?
Oh, the increase. So what we did. So what we did is we, as I took actually a spreadsheet and I calculated the number of poll workers we have on average for an election and the number of judges that we have running polling places. And then we calculated based on how much we pay them, how much we were paying them and how much we're paying them now, what we anticipated it to cost over the course of four elections. And of course, every election, our staffing is a little bit different because we don't have necessarily all polling places operating at each election. So I calculated kind of an average of, hey, if we had an August election, we'd probably have about half the precincts operating because it would only be a school levy. So let's calculate on that. And that's where that increase came out.
Okay, yeah. So you had to make those assumptions.
Yeah, we had to make some assumptions in there.
Okay, go right ahead.
And then we, we upped our projection of revenue. We increased it twenty-four thousand, but he's thinking maybe we can increase it.
Yes, so, so for fiscal year twenty-two, I had budgeted three hundred and four thousand, anticipated revenue coming in from the election consolidation fees that we get from the state. That actually, that number is actually proving to be under what, under projected because thanks to the census and our increased population and the amount of increase in the consumer price index that triggers some of the election consolidation total funds statewide, we're actually on track to get about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand this fiscal year. So for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, I believe my projection of three twenty-eight, we could bump up to about three thirty-two. It won't be as big of an increase as we saw from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two because we don't have a census this time to recalculate a dramatic amount of things. But we should see, as you can see from the graph at the top of the sheet there, that is from IAC, that election consolidation fund statewide will be increasing again for two thousand and twenty-three. That is the projection. And we will get a proportional share of that. So I think we can up our anticipated revenue from three twenty-eight on here to three thirty-two.
And we're trying to correlate that, cover hopefully our reorganization we want to have in elections at this point. The cost of the increase.
Yes.
Well, I mean, you're saying that it's going to be at twenty thousand and then you've got total increase about twenty-five.
Yeah. So that's. So that's what we're trying to. Of course, with the wage study, I talked briefly with Sylvia and I believe elections department was, what came back somewhat behind. So we need to wait to see what happens with that, too.
Okay, so with the revenue increase, so the revenue in general, and unless I'm missing something, what's not depicted here is how does that, how does that offset your expenses?
So it's no secret the state does not fully fund elections.
Okay.
The only election they probably actually fully fund is when they give an extra chunk for the presidential primary, and that's one, once every four years. Overall, they typically fund between about, they typically fund about forty percent of the cost of running the elections department. So while this increased revenue is helpful, we are hoping to talk to some legislators about changing the distribution formula a little bit because currently every county gets a base distribution of fifty thousand dollars and then the rest is proportional based on population. Some of these smaller counties don't even use fifty thousand dollars to run their elections. So, and also in general, the amount of money from sales tax that is diverted to election consolidation is not enough statewide to run elections in general. So it'd be nice if the legislators could maybe readdress this. And then, you know, if they funded a little bit more, then that's so much less that we can put in.
So how do you employ the state's rev funds?
So the state's funds, just they go directly into just our general expenses.
Fun ten. And it should be only dedicated to elections, but it's not restricted. But it does need to be used toward elections. So we were talking about if we have more revenue that comes back, right, than what we had projected or appropriated. It typically dumps in the general fund, but it does need to be used toward elections.
And this is what we use to pay for three years of, or two years of where university extension went. When we had that unanticipated revenue a couple of years ago.
So for example.
It's from the presidential.
Okay, so you've got over, say, fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars in supplies. Can you use that revenue to offset that? Can you use any of the state revenue? And I'm just using this as an example.
Yeah, it's because we're running elections. But right now, I hope I'm answering this right. It's all dedicated in Fund Ten. And then we project what we think the revenue will be. But that should be, it's just offsetting. It's not paying fully for election, obviously, employees and the cost of running all these elections. But it's to be used toward that.
Yeah, so, so right now, our, our current years, our current years budget, the revenue that we're going to be getting in from the state is going to sit right about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Okay.
But the cost of running elections between A budget and B budget, because we really don't have any C budget items right now, the cost of running elections in our current fiscal year is about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right. Okay.
And so the state doesn't cover, but like, like I said, about thirty-five, forty percent of what it actually costs us. If we had, if we could, if we only had the state's revenue they give us to pull from, we would barely be able to pay for staff salary and poll workers. We wouldn't be able to pay for supplies, tabulating machines, any of those other costs that are vital to running elections. Because the state just really doesn't give us a huge chunk for that.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. That it?
Yeah, and we're going to move on to district court. This is the most exciting one because we have revenue we never had before. Okay, so you have the handout for district court. And I did another slideshow of the Idaho Association of Counties just showing the magistrate court liquor distribution. Next year, we're going to hit the max of the fifteen percent. That was introduced a few years ago, a few years ago, our legislation. We were at twelve percent this year and next year we'll hit the fifteen percent. And so you can see that increase from two thousand and twenty-two to overall for the whole state to two thousand and twenty-three. And so with that, we had projected last year four hundred thousand dollars from the magistrate liquor apportionment. And we're probably going to get a little bit more than that. I talked to Tony at the liquor division at the state of Idaho. And with going up to fifteen percent, we've now projected six hundred thousand for next year. And what we did, we've talked to Carleen and Judge Meyer about how to appropriate that revenue. So what we did, we took a formula of employees and operating budgets based on the judges' budget and then our clerks' budget. And we did a formula with that to get that sixty-one percent of that and then thirty-nine percent for the judges of that revenue would be split. And we've talked to both Meyer and Carleen. And other counties are actually doing this, too. So that's good news. So for the first time in our budget, we'll be able to now have a revenue of three hundred and sixty-six thousand that we never had before to offset our cost. And with that, we do have some asks because of just district court growing. And then we have the compliance that's bringing in more money, too. And we'll cover that in a little bit more detail, too. But we're going to go on to the personnel request from there and changes. So I'm going to have Callie, do you mind speaking to this?
So we do have a few asks before you. Right now, the first new one here is for the clerk OT pool. Currently, we had asked for the fifty thousand going into each budget year. We are asking for an additional fifty because for the last projected couple of years, we've had to come back mid-year and ask for an extra basically amount to be added to that. We've been able to cover that amount within our budget. But we are getting to the point where those overtime costs are getting higher. So we'd like to just have that extra amount built in. Moving on to the court services clerk two position, we are asking for an increase up once, one grade, and then a step increase with this. This is an individual that is currently clerk two. We are asking for them to become a clerk three. This person has in about three weeks of taking on the clerk three, or going to be clerk three. They have cleaned up our entire guardianship and conservatorship back due cases. They've gone through, did a complete audit, and we are back on track. I know that we came before you guys in the last budget year asking for this additional clerk to bring us back up to speed. And they've done a tremendous job of that. Just like I said, in the last couple of weeks, they took that on. We are completely back up in compliance and they are working with the guardianship coordinator, providing him and Janet anything that they need as far as patrons coming in. And they're off, able to offer that additional service to the public. So that's why we are asking for that increase. This person is also our court accountant's backup. So they have been trained when she is out or off or sick or on vacation to do the complete accounting for her job as well. So that individual is taking on quite a bit extra in duties. Are there any questions about that one?
I have two asks for new positions. And Marissa, I believe, is on the line. They're asking for a float clerk supervisor and the compliance supervisor as those programs, but departments have grown and compliance. They have really been setting up payment plans and bringing in the revenue. Yeah, it goes into Fund forty-five dot eight, which is not our budget. We're dot two. I believe it's Carleen. It goes into Fund 45.8, which is not our budget, we're dot two, I believe it's Carleen and the judge's budget, but they, the compliance people are setting up on payment plans and bringing that revenue to try to offset, you know, both District Court's cost and both ends. So they're doing a good job, and it's been working out well.
And when that department did start out, it was one half-time person, so we've grown to four full-time, and it's getting to the point where we would really like to have a supervisor, and there's somebody that that department can go to, like all of our other departments, see the day-to-day institute business processes now that we are bringing in a lot more. We are setting up payment plans, helping with community service, and helping the public be compliant. So we have really grown in that aspect, so we are asking to have a supervisor, so that way.
So are we going to be taking this up next week, along with, well, see, the wage study's different because that has to do with existing.
Yes.
So these are new asks.
These two, yes, the two supervisor positions are new asks.
But again, with that revenue, part of that revenue was set up under state law to offset running District Courts. So we're going to be bringing in 366,000 we never had before to offset these asks, and still have some money to apply to the other parts of the budget.
And then your department as a whole, you guys have been pretty, one of the departments, County Y, that hasn't had a lot of turnover probably in the last 12 months.
Correct. We currently have three open positions, two were just recently vacated, and we held some more interviews, so we have one that we just filled, and then we have some training and shadowing going on next week to fill the other ones.
Pretty spectacular, out of 70-something.
It's rare that we have an open position and if it's open that long, so we do actively.
That's interesting.
Oh, the other thing we need to speak to, because HR asked that, the four temps that we ask for every year for the scanning, they asked, because we had it for how long, is this the fifth?
This is the fifth year we've renewed.
They asked us to make it a permanent position, so that's a conversion. We ask for them every year at the four, and then this year we came before the board to
About two months ago.
From, was it 1250 to $14 an hour? And so we're going to put them, HR has asked us to put them as permanent and on a step. I think it's step two, correct?
Yes, at 14, 17 an hour.
Yeah, I knew this was coming. And that's, can that, 360 liquor?
Yeah, so if you look at the total, all the asks that were, including the new positions.
283,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of those, all of those could fall under that proportionment.
So basically, that's offset, more than offset by your revenue.
Yes, and then again, even though it's not, it's in 45.8. The Compliance Department, along with Criminal and Civil, Civil have been bringing in even more revenue, and that's at first, on the first page, the bottom. It's just showing the revenue that we're projecting next year. So that's offsetting some of the cost. Again, it's in, the District Court is a judge budget, so.
And that's an example of thinking outside the box. We implemented this collections program, knowing it wouldn't go to our budget, but it does help offset the District Court's budget overall, and it's doing marvelously well. People are not being forced to go to collections, they, we are getting a lot more payments, and we're getting them on time. It's a great program. If I do say so myself, good job, ladies. They convinced me. I didn't think it would work.
And then the float supervisor we're asking, there's nine employees currently as floats there, so we're asking, they're like in the library.
Correct. So there's currently nine individuals that are in that current float role, and all of our other departments have eight to nine to 10 people with a lead and a supervisor, and so we are asking that that department have a full-time supervisor, so that way they can also.
How do they function today?
As me with our supervisor.
Oh, okay.
So it's two of them, over 70 employees. I mean, they have supervisor, again, in Criminal and Civil, and then some leads, but they do an amazing job for the amount of employees they have over there.
And that department directly reports to both of us.
Okay.
We've got other supervisors who have four employees.
And that's a difficult.
And they say.
Takes up to what, almost a year or two to get them.
A year to be trained in that position.
Okay.
So I think, so you already went over the temps?
I think our B budget's cut a little bit, too. Did you want to hit those other two? I think the conversions of why they've been here for five to six years. She's going to do it real quick, just to talk to that.
Okay, so real quick, we do have a couple conversions. We do have one that is the records supervisor. We are asking for that one to, it's the same grade, but we're asking for a step in that one, just to bring that person.
Market.
To market for that supervisory role. This person's been here for a little over six years, and they're doing a tremendous job, and they do take on a lot of additional roles as well in that department.
Which line item is that?
That is, let's see here, that's the records supervisor.
Is that Johnson?
Yes.
Oh, I got it, okay.
Yeah.
And then the one below that, that again is another one that we are asking for. It is a grade increase plus one step increase, and again, this individual has been here for a little over three years, and when that person did start, they were considerably before market, and so we're just asking basically to make that person kind of whole. That person does have a degree and came in with paralegal experience.
And what's going to be interesting here is that when Sylvia.
Yeah.
Right, does her plan, or we approve it, there's going to be grade changes involved, so it's going to be interesting to see how that plays into this.
Yeah, and we, and we understand that, too.
We knew that going into this.
We had to submit this probably two months ago, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's just areas that we want to.
Okay.
Hit just in case.
Yeah.
And then the last one, again, is pretty much the similar situation where we have a float clerk that started, and we're asking for a grade and step increase. When they came in, the starting was a little bit lower, now we have people coming in at, you know, a considerable amount higher. So we're just asking that that person also, since they've been here for six and a half plus years, and they're taking on a significant role and duties to bring that person up.
So you're saying 168,011 is having compression? 168,011, the float clerk?
Okay, yes.
That's the one you just mentioned about compression?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And then we already did discuss the temps. Did you guys have any additional questions on those ones?
No, I mean, you're, now you're starting to get into an area of, I don't know if it's FSLA or what the problem is, but you can't have temporary people working for five years.
And we were approached by HR a few times, just to keep bringing this up, and with those positions, it is a good starting point. Like I said, the only reason that we do have temp positions open, I don't like calling them temp, but is that they promote within pretty fast. So if we do training and they move to a different position, those are usually the first pool of people that, you know, are qualified to move into full-time positions.
I have a question, I don't know if you can answer it. How is your, if this is the right term, how is your caseload increasing?
Tremendously.
How do we spell that? Well.
Well, I mean, first off, we're catching up from COVID.
Right.
And as we heard yesterday, not everybody that comes into Cootney County is a really good, law-abiding citizen. So yes, our caseload is increasing, and they are doing a great job of staying on it, but it's getting harder to stay caught up.
And there was many years, I think for 10 years, we really didn't grow.
We didn't have.
Employees at all, and it just, it came to a breaking point.
So I don't have an exact number for you, but I can tell you that all of the judges' caseloads have increased, you know, double fold almost.
Which is why they're assigning two more. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And the, if, the B budget is attached here.
I took a look at that.
It's going down.
It's going down by 7,700. The biggest part of that is there is no construction coming forward for next year.
Got it.
I guess we're moving on to recorder now. She's got good news, because she, her department brings in money.
Money.
So the last week or so, we've been looking at how many recordings over the last essentially five years. It's slowed up a little bit, and Chris and I talked about this, I think, a couple of days ago or yesterday. So we had initially had projected more revenue, but seeing, just tracking how many recordings we're doing and where the revenue is right now, we ended up projecting down a little bit, and so we'll speak to that. But we did increase our revenue that we had, in 2022, we had adopted 1,388,500. We're trying to bring that to 1,484,600, which is about $176,000 increase of the overall budget. For the big ones that we bring in the revenue is the.
Recording fee.
Recording fee, and then the HB 521 recording fee, $7 a doc.
What is that?
She'll.
So when we record a document, there's two accounts that get a portion of each amount. So in that HB recording fee, that is a flat fee of $7. Any additional for the recording goes into that recording fee. That account also is proportioned with everything that we do in our office. So marriage licenses, if we do photocopies, a portion of that goes into that account. So that's why that one is always so much bigger. But like Jennifer indicated, the recording fees, those are our two main accounts, those are the biggest ones that bring in our revenue.
So last year, we had a record-breaking, 1.9 million for all revenue that was coming in, and those two accounts, I believe it was about 1.7 million, but it is slowing down, and there's not as much on the market, and things are sitting on the market still, right?
Yeah, so we've actually talked to people that have come into our office, people that work at banks, I mean, we've had people, construction workers that come in, contractors, and they're having a hard time getting supplies to build the homes, and then the interest rates are a factor, too. So there's a lot going on that's factoring into why everything's.
And then their B budget, they're going down. They're very self-sufficient. They bring more revenue in. So, but we'll keep on looking until the end. If it still continues to slow, I think we feel comfortable now for those numbers, but again, we're watching it daily, the recordings.
Interesting.
You guys have any questions?
Bill?
Okay, last but not least, the auditor, Grace is in a representance today. They don't bring revenue in, so.
So do you want me to speak to the personnel request?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we do have one request for an existing employee. It's our staff accountant, Grants, and we would like to have that position reevaluated to a grade 11 from a grade 10. This position is managing and monitoring the activity of the county grants. Over the last four years, the volume of our grant activity has increased three times. This position, in addition to doing the primary position of grants, has taken on the additional duty of training our new tax accountant, and that position is responsible for distribution to over 60 taxing districts. So they're, they're very complicated positions, both of them, and very high dollar volume that they work with. So that is our one request.
Is HR working on this?
I hope so.
We, we have, we're working on the job description, but we had to get it in the budget process, so we're going to submit that within the next week or so on there.
Every other staff accountant that we have is an 11.
Oh.
Our, but actually, our budget accountant is 11, and then a few, actually, we have another one that's 11, and then one that's a 10, so. But they're taking on this position right now, $60 million worth of grants a year, and they do an amazing job. And with this taxing accountant process, this individual knows it inside and out. I think we have one of the most complicated counties for taxing districts, along with the URDs that we have, and they had started this process, didn't they start that position initially many years ago? And it's a year-long process, the way you have to track this. So I see her constantly training and helping this individual, and she's a mint asset to the auditors division. She's been here for 15 years?
Yeah, 15 years. And on some of the duties that the tax accountant position does, they only touch it once a year. So you, you do it once, and then you don't do it again till the next year, so it's, it is very complicated.
Do we have a list of all the taxing agencies? Does that exist? I mean, we have to create something, or that just already exists?
You must have it.
Yeah, we have it. We have just over 60 taxing districts.
Okay, because I've heard as low as 44, so I would love to have that list, just to see, you know, what they are.
Doesn't even include the URDs either, that we have to still process information. I think we have about 58 active, it depends, actually, they were looking at it last week. It's on the state website, too, I believe.
Oh.
I can have her send it to you.
Okay, that'd be great. And then you'd mentioned something, yeah, like, for instance, Cootney Health is a taxing district, but they don't collect at all. So that would probably be in the inactive ones, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then our B budget went up slightly, and Grace will talk to, basically, it's paper, and then our Adobe license have increased.
Yeah, it, it's up less than 5%. It's $2,500 increase, and most of the lines that have gone up have to do with paper, printing, print shop, and airfare. And we also have our non-capital software line did go up. That is for our Adobe licenses. Ours are all not supported, so that covers 10 licenses. And then in our non-capital equipment, that's new chairs and standing desks. Our chairs are falling apart.
When, when were those purchased? Weren't they purchased with the, the cubicles, when the cubicles were done, or?
No, not all of them. In fact, Jim's chair is completely falling apart.
I know, I.
I think he has the worst chair.
Yeah, I had Daddy Bear's chair, so they had to get me a new chair, so I had actually not, you know.
So you need 19 chairs?
We have a lot of chairs that will no longer, i- if.
They don't work?
Yeah, they don't work. So the hydraulic part just drops down, so trying to get those replaced, and it, it's cheaper than a worker's comp claim to have good chairs that support the staff. So I think Randy, I think Randy.
Mine doesn't work right either.
Mine doesn't either. I'm like, oh, that looks fine.
Randy has already said she wants the first chair.
Need a high chair.
So, but, yeah, it, if I need to make any adjustments, we can do that.
I'm just trying to count people, and I, I just can't count up to 19.
Gemini.
Oh, okay, so all county assistance offices, too.
Well.
Well, you can't afford to be falling over.
We have five of the auditor staff in county assistance.
Right.
You know, if we do have turnover in auditor, everybody goes and grabs a chair. They put divs on them, I'm not, I'm not kidding you, they are that bad.
Just a question on the airfare.
Yes.
Obviously, airfares have gone, who travels?
Every one of the staff accountants typically will go to some sort of a conference. Keith is actually at a conference this week. Dina would have been at that conference.
That's right, okay.
It's the JFOA conference. Next year, the JFOA conference is in Portland, so I've already talked to Keith. It would be nice if we could rent a van, not fly, and then take as much of the staff to the conference, because it would be economical.
I think that's pretty much it. And then, just, just for clarity, on our travel, Jim and I have a travel budget. We had decreased it for a couple of years because we weren't traveling, and with the new chief deputy coming in and clerk, we've increased it about, I think, $1,100, because we hadn't been traveling as much for those conferences to IAC.
Well, with COVID, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't think so. I think the only thing would be some of the stepping grades. We have a lot of people who are in the same situation, so that's why I made note of the compression issue, because that's something that we can get into trouble with.
Correct.
But just normal stepping grades.
Hopefully, we'll be dealing with a lot.
Yeah, we understand we're waiting for that meeting, it's just we had to put it in the budget process, so.
Nope, I appreciate that.
Okay. Anything else?
Just, we are, we are really trying, for budgetary purposes, I've met with Bill and Chris and Ashley individually, we're trying to give you accurate revenue, because it's always good to know how much you've got, so you know how much you can spend.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And, and we have really put a. And, and we have really put a fine-tuning on our revenue. And I think we're going to be pretty close.
Okay.
But we're not underestimating it based on what was happening ten years ago.
And just to take away from the document that Brandy had requested, I think she sent out Monday for the requested per-elected officials, you'll see that our OPX B budget is going down four hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and six thousand, partly because of that Fund Ten and involuntary mental holds there.
Right, right.
But even though our personnel is going up, we're growing in the demand of the clerks division. I think we're about a hundred and five employees right now, and it just feels like, seems like it's sometimes not enough, you know?
How many openings do you have across all divisions?
We only have a couple in District Court.
There are three technically.
One in Elections. Yeah, so we're doing pretty good for one hundred and five.
Five out of a hundred and five. Pretty good.
What are our seventeen? Like fifty?
Oh, yeah, but that, well, actually, actually, Anne is down to six.
She's down to six.
Yeah, so that's fantastic. So I'm hoping things will start to, to change, and, but yeah.
I think the hardest part for us in the clerks division is we have a lot of grade three and fours, you know, and the cost of living.
We have the lowest paid in the county.
Inflation's very hard for them, so I try to be a voice for them, because they work really, really hard and put in some long hours. And at elections, I have to say, it's with the growth, I think we're at a hundred and five thousand registered voters, and the amount of public record requests and just the stress of the position since two years ago, I think they do a tremendous job. So I just want to recognize their work being sometimes grades threes and fours and saving in District Court.
Right, and so I'm thinking, I'm hoping that that, the whole, the bottom just goes away, and then we elevate.
We are.
Yeah, so that, that would be beneficial, because it's just hard to get those positions anymore at that wage, so.
And I like to say recorder too, because we have, that are grades four. So they do a tremendous job doing, bringing revenue into the county, and they have a really good team that works well together.
Thank you for that. And we still exceed Canyon County, don't we, for voter registration?
I used to know that.
Do we?
We're almost.
We are, we are about four to five thousand registered voters behind Canyon, but percentage of population, we well.
Oh, I see.
Well, I see.
Interesting.
Okay, and I think we're ahead of them in valuation.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so thanks to Waterfront.
Yeah, I would say we are the second largest county, not the third.
Okay, then. Any public comment? None. Two fifty-two. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.